... where people in need experience compassion, connection with others, and a sense of neighbors helping neighbors. During this last year, I've seen a big increase in the number of people accessing the food bank, in part because of the federal changes in funding, and it's going to increase significantly when the SNAP program is ending. People used to be able, clients used to be able to shop four days a week. It's now one day a week, and there are more limits on the number of items that they can The amount of appreciation that the people express is kind of overwhelming when they come in. So many of them, sometimes I've had people in tears who say, "I don't know how I would get by without this resource." There are people that come in, individuals of all ages, people in their twenties and into the late nineties. Some of them have jobs, but they're not making enough to get by at all. But they are so appreciative, and I just see the food bank as helping to make this community more compassionate and more resilient. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Maria Metzler.
Good evening. My name is Maria Metzler, and I'm the Executive Director of Helpline House. I'm here to strongly support Councilmember Dietz's proposal to allocate $30,000 to Helpline House, funding that would directly help put food on tables here on Bainbridge Island. For more than 50 years, Helpline House has been part of the fabric of this community. We provide essential services, things like nutritious food, help with housing and utilities, transportation support, mental health counseling, and programs for kids and seniors. Everything we offer is free of charge to anyone on the island who needs it. And over all those years, one thing has remained constant: the need for food assistance. In fact, that need has only grown. Last year, our food bank supported over 18,500 visits and distributed nearly a million pounds of food. Those are not just statistics. They represent real people, our neighbors, who are working hard, raising families, caring for aging parents, and just trying to make it through. I gave this public comment two weeks ago, and I'm always grateful for a relevant opportunity to speak to council about the impact that Helpline House has on our community. The focus two weeks ago was requesting council support for the allocation of funds due to the federal budget cuts that affect our funding and our sources of food. That gap remains, and it's somewhat staggering to think that anything could be more important than to request assistance for some major cuts to food support systems in our area, specifically on Bainbridge Island. And yet, many of our neighbors are on the precipice, mere days away, from seeing their SNAP benefits, most commonly known as food stamps, go unfunded due to the government shutdown. Sure, on Bainbridge Island, we also serve residents who are not eligible for food stamps, often because they make just above the income threshold, yet still cannot afford basic necessities. But imagine being among those who do qualify, only to have your benefits suspended because of circumstances entirely out of your control. And even when SNAP benefits are eventually reinstated, they will return in a reduced form with decreased funding and stricter work and age requirements. This means more of our neighbors will turn to Helpline House in the weeks and months ahead. Sadly, I can close with the same statement I made two weeks ago, but the sentiment feels a bit more dire and urgent. Members of the Bainbridge Island community are struggling. This allocation would go directly to putting food on the tables for our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Phaedra Elliott, and I'm the Executive Director of Housing Resources Bainbridge. Recently, HRB approached the city with the request to change the current city-enforced AMI restriction on seven of our units at the Oliver. This request first came before you on October 14th. This item is again on your agenda this evening as a request for reconsideration. We are hopeful that you will take action on this item tonight. Right now, the city requires that we serve households at 60% of AMI and below in these seven units at the Oliver. We requested that the city increase this restriction to 80% AMI and below, allowing us to serve a slightly broader range of low-income households. The remaining six units have Kitsap County Home Fund attached. This funding requires us to serve those units at 50% and below, and this would be unchanged by any revision of the city. We have seen concern that this request was made because there is a lack of households at 65% of AMI and below, or because we are having trouble locating them. This is definitely not the case. For the Oliver units, we had 245 households on our waiting list for one-bedroom units, and most of those are below 60% AMI. The households are there, and the need is there. In fact, almost all of HRB's rental units serve households at this level and lower. And on Bainbridge Island, there are currently 305 units of affordable rentals, and only 13 of them serve the 60% to 80% AMI range. That's 4%. To be clear, all of the units at the Oliver are currently rented. This request was about who we had to turn away because of current restrictions, and the rare opportunity to ask for flexibility so that we may better serve our community. We made this request because we encountered local workers who sought affordable housing from HRB, but who make just a little bit more than 60% AMI. We saw a need, and unlike most other restrictions we must operate within, we had the opportunity to appeal to those setting the restriction to make a change. HRB is hopeful that our City Council grants us this small flexibility, affirming that you are responsive to those who are doing the work of permanently affordable housing on the ground. The work of low-income rental housing is largely dictated by state and federal grants that are used to construct the buildings, and this funding regulates who we can serve. The system is inflexible and imperfect. We almost never have the opportunity to appeal to legislators for even small amounts of flexibility. With these seven Oliver units, that flexibility exists because this body can decide to change that. If our request tonight is approved, we will still rent Oliver units to those below 60% of AMI. If we do rent to a household that is above 60%, the rent will be adjusted to fit that higher income, which gives us more flexibility to lower rent for those households that may need that. The rules and regulations around affordable housing often require us to fit households into very prescribed boxes, but real families don't easily fit into boxes, and this request will help HRB to make that box a little more flexible. Thank you again for being willing to revisit this request.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Heather Berger, and I'm the Executive Director at Friends of the Farms. Two weeks ago, I spoke in strong support of Councilmember Dietz's proposal to provide a one-time $30,000 emergency allocation to Helpline House from the council's contingency fund. At that time, I shared that Helpline House had lost 40% of its federal funding for food commodities, and that the number of families relying on their services has doubled in just two years: over 400 households each week. Since then, the situation has only become more urgent. Yesterday, the Washington State Employment Security Department reported that unemployment claims are now 20% higher than this time last year. At the same time, food banks across Washington are bracing for another blow. Beginning next week, thousands of residents will lose critical SNAP benefits, drastically reducing the amount of food assistance available. For every one meal a food bank can provide, SNAP benefits provide nine. This gap cannot be filled without immediate action. Our community is doing everything we can. Through Friends of the Farms Share the Harvest program, we've already purchased and donated over 8,500 pounds of fresh food from local farmers to Helpline House. That's been made possible by the generous support of Bainbridge Island Rotary, the Bainbridge Community Foundation, the Windermere Foundation, Cedars Church, and many individual donors. And just this week, we learned that the Lures Foundation will contribute an additional $8,000, which will allow us to purchase even more local food from farmers for families in the weeks ahead. But this unprecedented situation requires all of us, nonprofits, businesses, faith communities, foundations, individuals, and our city government to work together. The city's support will make a real and immediate difference, helping ensure that everyone has the most fundamental necessity: food on their table. Tonight, I respectfully ask you to approve Councilmember Dietz's proposal without delay. This is not just an act of compassion; it's a necessary step to ensure that no one in our community goes hungry. Thank you for your consideration and for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Hi. Hi, I'm Mev Hoberg, and I'm a board member at Helpline House, and I'm back to talk to you about the item on your agenda, which is a request to grant Helpline House $30,000 from the city's contingency fund to serve as emergency funding to support an increased need for food among Bainbridge Island community members. I urge you to vote yes on that item. Did you know Kitsap County has the highest percentage of government workers of any county in the Puget Sound region? Right now, those government workers aren't being paid. In Kitsap County, SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which you might call food stamps, helps over 24,000 residents, including over 7,000 children, afford groceries each month. As Maria pointed out, next week's SNAP benefits will be paused entirely while the government remains closed, and when the government reopens, SNAP benefits will eventually resume, but they will be reduced drastically. So when you're not being paid, and when your SNAP benefits run out, where do you go? You go to food banks. Last year, one in four Washington residents visited a food bank. Here on Bainbridge, we've seen visits to Helpline House Food Bank increase 66% over the last two years. We now serve 400 families a week. So great for a food bank, except, as Heather pointed out, the federal government has cut more than half a billion dollars in already allocated funding for the Emergency Food Assistance Program, which provides proteins like meat, eggs, milk, and dairy, and produce, directly to food banks. Nationwide, that's millions of pounds of food not going to food banks. Here on Bainbridge, that means literally thousands of pounds of food that Helpline House had counted on not being delivered to us, which has resulted, as Joan said, in families who could previously shop four days a week now being limited to one day a week of shopping, with limits on what they can get in terms of protein, meat, eggs, and dairy. We are profoundly grateful for the efforts of our local partners, Friends of the Farm, which have helped us keep amazing fresh produce on our shelves, but federal cuts are ongoing, and the increasing demand for services will be met with decreasing resources. I urge you to consider allocating the $30,000 of the city's contingency funds to Helpline House so that we can continue to provide food for hungry islanders. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Nancy Dowey, and I'm here in support of the Helpline request. I'm a relatively new volunteer at Helpline, and I'm at the check-in, check-out area, and we're always so busy. There's always people waiting to get a cart to do their shopping, and it's a busy job. Not having enough food is a terrible plight for anyone, especially families. It's a basic need. At Helpline, due to donations, the food is of really good quality, which is, really impresses me from other places I've lived. It's from the farm, so it's good-quality, healthy food for people. All ages of people come to Helpline. There's young families, and there's people in their 90s. There's people who walk there, bike there. You know, there are all kinds of ways of getting there, too. And the other services they provide are so impressive, too. If they see a family that needs other needs, like counseling, they have birthday cakes for kids they make. It's just wonderful, the stuff they do. So I'm asking, and with SNAP benefits expiring November 1st, there's going to be so many people who will be in a lot more trouble than they even are now. So I'm urging you to support the request they made. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Maggie Kaiser. Oh, and I just deleted my notes. Oh, thank goodness for undo. All right, I'm Maggie Kaiser. This is Eli and Grace Kaiser. I was born and raised on the island, and I moved back here to raise my family here. My family has supported Helpline for as long as I can remember. My mother, Barb Pettit, was a Helpline volunteer for most of my childhood, and I would help with the holiday giving event at Helpline. Now I'm a six- or five-year volunteer, currently every Tuesday morning at the front desk of the food bank. And my children did a summer food drive and helped stock the shelves. I'd like to share my perspective with you from this morning in the food bank. When I arrived at 9:30, there were already about 15 people waiting just to check in. This was more than normal. Myself and my two co-volunteers worked as fast as we possibly could to check in and bag groceries of the clients, and yet, we continued to have about 10 people waiting to shop, waiting for a cart, for the majority of our shift this morning. This was more than normal. Some clients came to use the food bank but could not wait, so they left. The clients who shopped had fuller carts than I usually see. In the course of the morning, I registered five new households to use the food bank. This was more than normal. I look at those faces, and I wonder how many of them are counting on having money on their EBT cards next week. Many of them may not even know that the balance may be zero this time next week. And how many who aren't even using the food bank yet will be coming through those doors next week, and in the coming weeks and months, because our federal government is not supporting them enough? As federal support diminishes and needs increase, will there be enough food in our food bank? I don't know. But I do know, what I do know is that if you decide to grant this $30,000 to Helpline, it will be spent on urgently needed food and supplies for the people in our community that need it most. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to your helpers. Next, Laura Lant.
It's Laura Lant from Hidden Cove Road. I wish I had little helpers, too. They were helpful. It's really telling, these conversations that are happening tonight about simply food assistance, not even talking about help with utilities and rent and all the other things that are also, you know, falling short right now. And maybe it's time, I mean, I think $30,000 is fantastic. Maybe it's time to kind of look at the budget and see if there's any more money that can be reallocated in anticipation of more needs that haven't been brought up to council yet. So please, please think about that. The original reason that I came up here was just, just a quick note about Housing Resources Board's request and where it falls on the agenda relative to a discussion about housing strategies. And this is something that, in the proper order, I think everything would work out. But when things are done kind of backwards, it just gives pause. And so by this, I mean that if the city of Bainbridge Island still hasn't figured out how to implement House Bill 1220, then we don't really have any business giving away a low AMI at this point in time that we'll have to make up for later. And I really think that organizing the attack for how this, the housing strategies will look to, so we can comply with state mandates, I mean, that's critical for the city. It's also critical for Housing Resources Board to have tenants that can pay a certain amount of money as well. So I just urge you to think about strategies first before you give away an AMI that may be very difficult to make up for later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Barbara Watanabe.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Watanabe. I'm a relatively new member of this wonderful community, and I also volunteer at Helpline House. I've been very fortunate to have lived in the Puget Sound most of my life, and I've lived in very diverse socioeconomic communities. I grew up in Rainier Valley and Mercer Island during childhood and adolescence, and then Federal Way, and now Bainbridge as an adult. Living in these diverse socioeconomic communities has taught me the value of supporting their members. Helpline House is invaluable to our community by giving support, not only with the food bank, but also with the social services it provides. We are all concerned with the lack of support and funding that everyone's talked about. And the Bainbridge Island community members must step up to help fill the void. Providing service and support, especially to the less fortunate and vulnerable members of the community, is exactly the mission of Helpline House. I urge the members of this council to endorse support for this valuable service organization. I'd also like to add as a side note that I've been able to volunteer at the food bank, and it's been one of the most fulfilling experiences I personally have had in my retirement. The dedication and kindness I experienced from all of the staff is just palpable, and it's actually infectious. That's about it. I want to thank you for your time.
We can feel it, too. Thank you. Okay, and with that, that looks like that is all we have. Yep, okay. So with that, public comment is closed, and we will move on to council announcements.
Consent agenda.
Oh, we'll move on to consent agenda. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. I move approval of the consent agenda as presented tonight.
Great. Motion was made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Fancher Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
I see no opposition. Now we will move on to council announcements. Councilmember Murawaki.
Yeah, there's some news. Last week, I talked a lot about Kitsap Transit, and I buried the lead. At that meeting last week, we unanimously voted to give free bus passes to any federal employee. All they have to do is show their ID. And as told earlier today, or this evening, they are a large employer, and this island, I mean, well, there are a lot of people on this island who need that, so that's a really a good thing. You know, on the Kitsap, on Kitsap Transit, I'll be leaving tomorrow morning with some of my commissioners and the executive director to Champaign-Urbana, Illinois, going to their Mass Transit Authority structure. They were one of the first bus systems to have a hydrogen plant, hydrogen buses, and now they have the electrolysis system that creates the hydrogen. It's done by solar power, and they make so much solar power that they're back in the grid, so essentially, these buses run for free. It's a pretty exciting thing to look at. This morning, I was at the Kitsap Housing Authority Board, and some good news, I mentioned earlier, that a donor on this island purchased a former daycare center on Cave Road, and she, 100, she gave 100% of that money, but she wanted to, the Kitsap Housing Authority doesn't have a way to carry that vehicle, so bring it to Bainbridge Foundation, Bainbridge Community Foundation, where they hold her. And they held that money in advance until we could pass today, and I gotta, I'm gonna make sure I get the acronym right, BASIC, Building Affordable Strategic Innovative Communities, and it is a nonprofit structure that organizations like Kitsap Housing Authority can accept targeted donations. And so it's, it's its own entity on itself. We made that today. And this is going to be something that's probably going to break ground next year, and it's going to be at least three units, two bedrooms, one bedroom, and they are targeting 80% of area median income. And since there's no federal funds involved, certainly, my urging workers who are here are going to get preference on the application, so that this, this will be there for us. I think that's an exciting thing. And the final part, the Rota Dender Apartments across from the high school, all of their electrical panels are going to be upgraded very soon. So there's, there's a lot of movement in the affordable housing arena. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Murawaki. Next was Councilmember Schneider, then Councilmember Dietz.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I was invited by Brandon, Brandon Fleet, I'm sorry, of the Bainbridge Island Rowing Club. And so I went and got a chance to sit in one of the safety boats when they, when we were all going out for the, I think it was a Wednesday morning rowing outing, so there were singles and doubles and quads of rowers on the boats, and no, I didn't row, because I don't know how yet, but I'm tempted. Anyway, it was, it was lovely, and I just wanted to, to share that. I asked if others were going to be invited from council, and he said, "Yes, definitely." Some had already been or whatever, so I just encourage you to do it. And then, a very small thing, but, you know, these things matter. The Department of Ecology sent out a request for public comments for the Zever Green State Dialogue Sessions, and so I submitted comments online, and I just, again, it would be great if you see that, to, to participate. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dietz.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mayor, and glad to hear, a great trip you're going on. Love to hear more when you get back. And let's see. Yesterday, I attended a Washington Climate Partnership Meeting. This is a regional body, actually, a state body sharing climate work, and in particular, we, we received presentations from the Puget Sound Clean Air Advisory Council, which I'm on the advisory board, kind of what their plan, climate plan is, and I think I was, no, Laura Reiser was there, you know, our climate mitigation officer, as well as I. So there was the two of us representing Bainbridge, and, and I, I brought up that we have our own climate action plan, and just love to integrate our efforts with the state efforts, and they did take note of that. Let's see, next week, have a meeting of the Whisper Executive Committee Meeting. This is the West Sound Ecosystem Recovery Board, does a lot of salmon recovery. I'm the vice chair, working on the work plan for next year. And the EPA found $150,000, the way they described it, it was like under the mattress sort of thing, and they said, "Please take this before it goes away." And, and so we're, we're gonna, you know, it's a lot, but it's not, but we're gonna see what we can do with that money. And lastly, I have my office hours this Saturday, so from 10 to noon at CUPS in Winslow, please come and see me and talk about any city business. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dietz. Let's see, I'll go. So last week, we had our, I guess it was this, last week, we had our Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting, where we were presented with the Regional Climate Action Plan, and their goals that they're trying to achieve before 2030, and how those coincide with development and things like that. So if it's, if you have a chance, I would go ahead and look at that, go to Puget Sound Regional Council's website. I'm sure it's up there, but I'm sure there's lots of interest. It's very good information. And then last Thursday evening was Kayak, which is the Kitsap Immigrant Assistance Coalition, or their event at Keanu Lodge was absolutely beautiful, and they read a poem that I wish I could remember. Oh, yes, okay. I will figure it out in the end, but it was really good. Anyway, and then also, I participated in a ribbon cutting at Fluffy Rough. They moved two doors down, so all you pet owners who are looking, it was really cool. There was tons of dogs in there. They, I think they do, they do nails and all of that stuff, so it was, yeah, so a good week, lots of meetings. And I think tomorrow, we have, Thursday, we have the Association of Washington Cities, our Zone 12 is our zone, the regional meeting in Polesbo, and I know a few of us are going to that, and then some other things going on. Did you have anything, Deputy Mayor? No? Okay. All right. I'm gonna try to find that thing, because it's too good. Okay, okay, I found it. This is a poem that a student read to us, and it's called "In Lak, In Laketch" by Louis Valdez, and it's "I Am You or You Are Me. You are my other me. If I do harm to you, I do harm to myself. If I love and respect you, I love and respect myself." I loved it. That's it. Yeah, okay. Now we'll go on to our City Manager's Report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I just have two small, well, two items to highlight, not small. The first is that the work plan is in your packet with its attachment. There are roughly 80 to 90 projects listed on that, where we're reporting out to you quarterly to really show the wide variety of projects that city staff are undertaking. They are a good reminder that there are a lot of projects that are underway, some that we're getting done, and that the decisions that we make in any one meeting have a long tail, a long buildup and a long tail. As an example, there's a solar project on that list that the city council decided in 2020 that we should do a solar project or a project to offset the carbon related to the Ted Spearman Justice Center. That project now is a solar installation that's happening at Woodward School. It's almost done, but that's a five-year kind of effort that has gone on from that one decision. But we're delighted to do that. Second, I wanted to just say, in terms of things that happen on an ongoing way, we had storm response this weekend to the storm that was thankfully not quite as dire as it had been predicted. But we had six staff members who dedicated their weekend to responding to clogged catch basins, downed trees, and bringing generators to make sure that the wells continued working so the water utility could continue to deliver water to our residents. So just wanna provide a special shout out and thanks to the public work staff who are working outside when it's wet and cold so that we can stay as comfortable and safe as possible when we're in our homes or moving around the island. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Deputy City Manager. And I forgot, I had one last thing, which was to really thank all of the community partners who are stepping up in these times of need. As a young mother, I was on SNAP and WIC, and at this point of the month, on the 28th, your benefits are already gone. I mean, realistically, so lots of folks are very scared, and I hope our community continues to rise to the occasion. Okay, next we have regular business. First, we're going to receive a presentation from our planning consultant, Joe Tovar.
Thank you. Just a few words of introduction. We are glad to have our consultant, Joe Tovar, here with us today. Joe is a consultant who has been working with us since July to help bring our comprehensive plan update process forward. Joe has been working in various planning roles for almost 50 years, or right around there, as a planning director for three different cities, a member of the Growth Management Hearings Board, a project manager at the Ruckles House Center, and as planning faculty at both the University of Washington and Western Washington University, as well as a consultant for folks like us. He has worked with us, with the city of Bainbridge Island, one other time in 2016 and 2017, and we're grateful to have him here today to give an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Good evening, Council. Happy to be here. I've got some slides I'd like to share with you and walk you through my report. I've been here since July 1st, working with the Planning Commission, city staff, talking to a number of stakeholder groups and other people. So I'm gonna talk a bit about where we are now, current status of work that's been done, talk about challenges that we're still working through and that are in the future, the near term and the longer term, and then about a potential path forward that I'd like to recommend. So if we can pull up the first slide, that's me. Everywhere where you see my little logo there, Compass Rose, that's me talking. So partly I'm reporting on what the commission has done, what they've heard, some of the decisions, tentative decisions that they've made, where they are. But there are times when I'm just pointing something out that I think, from my perspective, I'd like you as a council, as well as the commission and the people watching at home, to be aware of. So the first thing I want to recognize is that this periodic update project, which is mandated by the state, is an opportunity, really, for this council and this community to advance many of the things that you've posted there on the wall, your council priorities and areas of emphasis for this year and next year, including the comprehensive plan, the Winslow Siberia Plan, affordable housing, and equity lens to be applied to city policy decisions, and a climate action plan implementation. So these are things that are important to you, even if the Growth Management Act wasn't telling you, you have this other framework that you need to be thinking about and moving forward with. Next slide, please. So one of the things I had to become familiar with early on in this process was the work that's already been done here. Tremendous amount of work has been done by the commission, by the community, by the staff. So to get up to speed on a lot of that, I had to do a fair amount of reading, watched a fair number of videos of previous meetings of the council and of the commission, read the Housing Action Plan, very impressive document that I know a lot of work and time went into. And what I've highlighted here, just a couple of the things that are listed in the Housing Action Plan, are pretty good direction for things that this community is saying is important for you to do. Again, parallel to, but apart from, what the state law might require you to think about or do. So I'm not gonna read these different actions that are listed. You're familiar with many of these. In fact, progress has already been made on a number of these things. But keep it in mind as something that is unique to and specific to this community that you've thought through, you've given priority to, you've identified with some action verbs, things that should be happening that you intend to do. So the commission, we spent some time kind of going over some of this. We gave them actually a hard copy in a binder of the Housing Action Plan. There's just a tremendous amount of material in there. But what we tried to do is to extract the essence of some of the things that it's saying are important, think about doing as you respond to the housing needs on the island. Next slide. Now, the commission also spent a fair amount of time thinking very globally at a high level about what's important here, about values, about priorities. And one of the things that's interesting that they looked at were, last time I was here up on the wall, were the guiding principles. I'm not sure when those went off the wall, but now you've still got them on the agendas, so they're still, you know, front of mind. So the commission looked at those eight existing guiding principles, talked about housing. And what they came up with, you see here, is a draft guiding principle that they talked about in August and that they're gonna be recommending to you all to think about. These guiding principles live in the comprehensive plan. So this is something that, as you're looking at the comprehensive plan, you should be thinking about what's in the plan right now that is good, that doesn't need to be revised, but we should be aware of, and I'll talk a little bit about some of that later. But here, they've said, we now have a housing goal that at the state level is providing the impetus and the direction for what all cities and counties in the state should be thinking about. So the Growth Management Act housing goal, you see at the top of the page here, reads "Plan For and Accommodate." That's a new piece of language that was adopted by the legislature with House Bill 1220. They said, you're not just a plan for, you're to accommodate. It's an act of verb. "Housing that is affordable to all economic segments of the population of this state, promote a variety of residential densities and housing types, and encourage preservation of existing housing stock." So the commission talked about this. They thought about it, and what they came up with was their variation on that, picking up, I think, a couple of key words out of that state goal and saying, we should be capturing those as a ninth guiding principle. Accommodate, there's that word, "housing affordable to all current and future residents of the island, promote a variety of housing types, and encourage preservation of existing housing stock." So these are cut from the same bolt of cloth in terms of policy priorities. And I think I'd recommend it to you, when you see the term PC draft on some of these pages, they're working through this. They haven't finished with virtually any of this. They have working, I would call, working drafts of different pieces. I'll be looking at some of those tonight, but when you see something that says PC draft, just understand, they're not finished with it quite yet. Next slide. Now, when I got here in July, I began to attend meetings. I'd looked retroactively at some of their previous meetings online and discussed with them a number of what I would call process improvements to how the commission does its business, how they run their meetings, how they make decisions, how they move forward. And we had a couple of discussions, private discussions in some cases, group discussions in other cases, talking about how can we move forward in a timely fashion with the tremendous amount of work that is still in front of them. What they did was they committed to add a third day of meeting each month, rather than the normal two a month, they're now committed to three. That is a lot to ask of volunteer members of an advisory. It's a hard work. And every hour they spend in here, they spend some other number of hours at home or at their workplace getting ready for conversations they're gonna have here. So I want to compliment them for that. I think they should be thanked for that. At the same time, the work that's still in front of them will continue to require a fair amount of their time and energy. One of my concerns, and I'll talk about this a bit later, is that you not waste good infantry, to quote Napoleon. These people have a tremendous amount of energy and dedication and altruism. They're dedicating to this effort, but you can't burn out your planning commission by expecting too much of them for too long. They actually committed to a two-day, what they called a meeting surge in early September, where they met back-to-back two days, and one of those days was an all-day session, where they were really trying to focus, they were still on Winslow, really trying to focus on the development regulations piece of what needs to be in this update. So they spent a couple of days looking at that, really getting into it. They began what I would call more active management of the meeting agenda by the chair. The chair running the meeting is essential to any deliberative body. Couple of the improvements that they began to implement, there were two, I would say, to increase the number of motions that they then used to expedite discussion and resolution. We shared that it's important for everybody to be heard. It's important for diverse opinions to be exchanged. But it's also important to come to closure on issues, and the motion is the way to do that. So the other bullet that's listed here was an acknowledgement that I think they all understood, except that you need to dispose of motions by majority vote, not by unanimous vote. Trying to get unanimity sounds great. In the practical world, it's a terrible idea if you don't have enough time to get to unanimity. So I think that was a process improvement that they've implemented. They also created two subcommittees of the commission as they were trying to increase the surface area of time and energy and focus by their commissioners on some of these issues. One committee, the subcommittee, was dealing with the development regulations, and another subcommittee was dealing with incentives for affordable housing and financial tools to address subsidy for the portions of the income bands that were extremely low-income, low-income. So they've done some work. They've shared some of that information with their peers. We'll be doing that again Thursday night as the two subcommittees explain kind of where they are, what their thoughts on those two topical areas. What we're gonna be suggesting is they get that to a collective discussion. I think the time for the subcommittee is probably, it's now passed. They've done their work. Now we need to have a discussion of the seven of them together. And the bar for them now will be to come up with what I'm calling a working agreement, which isn't 7-0, it could be 6-1, it might be 7-0, but they need to get a majority sense of what they want to say about development regulations, about potential ways to approach incentives for affordable housing, ways to deal with the different choices the city might have about how to spend public dollars to subsidize some of the housing that's needed. So these are things they have done. This is hard work. Adapting and doing things differently is never easy. But they've risen to that challenge, and they've taken some of that on. It's important, in that spirit, that they continue to do that. We'll talk more about that shortly. Next slide. This is just an acknowledgement that way back in February, Planning Commission had this draft of the Siberia, Winslow Siberia boundaries, the overall boundary, and then some districts within the area. So that's not where they are now. They've talked about that. They've looked at a lot of information. They had a number of discussions, and now they've moved forward with a different version of some of these boundaries. Next slide, please. So here is a snapshot of a piece of the Winslow Siberia Plan boundary and districts that they have come up with. This was as of the 23rd, just recently. Now, the purpose of me showing you some of these snapshots is to say, well, now let's talk about what we think about where that line is between District A and District B. The time will come for that, but even if they are not finally where they want to be in terms of firming up where they think these boundaries ought to be. They've given it a lot of thought. They've also given a lot of thought to what's different in the orange area as opposed to the blue area, as opposed to the yellow area, in terms of use mix, in terms of building form, building height, different issues that might be better addressed differently, different parts of the Siberia. So this is a draft. It's still, I think, I think it's pretty well done, but I think they're still gonna have more discussion about these issues going forward. Next, please. They've also talked quite a bit about form, which is the shape of buildings, the massing of buildings, the orientation of buildings, the setback or stepbacks of building mass. They've heard and understand this is a big issue, the scale and orientation of what gets built in Winslow is very, very important. So they spent a fair amount of time, this is just one option, this is option two, of how some of the stepbacks might be dealt with in parts of the Siberia Plan. And again, I'm not asking you to vote on this right now or say, I like this, I don't like this, what is that? Time for that will come, but for now, this is just a snapshot of some of the thinking that they've been doing as a commission. This is primarily some of the work of the standards subcommittee that's now being shared with the full commission. And we'll be hearing more about that in the next couple of weeks. Next. Another thing they've done is to talk about, well, where might different building forms be appropriate in different districts of the Winslow Siberia? And rather than read you both axes here, basically I'll tell you, one of these is the districts, and the other one are different kinds of building forms, which could be low-rise, mid-rise, detached, attached, talking about base building forms with potentials for additional building height or for floor area, depending upon where you are, and how to create that additional bonus as an incentive for affordable housing. Now, the mechanics and the details of that are still in process, but the basic concept that this matrix tries to convey is they're recognizing there are differences along Winslow Way than there are along Madison. The High School Road is different than the core area. So they're kind of slicing and dicing with this matrix what specifically matters most to how these forms would be regulated from place to place within Winslow. Next. Now, there are a number of policies to review. We talk about how to create incentives for affordable housing. The incentives subcommittee spent a lot of time looking at this, and I worked with them. We did a lot of looking at what other places have done. And believe me, there's a lot out there, a lot of different approaches that different cities have taken. These are links to some of the other sections that other cities have done, things like Fianlu programs, inclusionary zoning policies. There's no one right way to do this, but there are many ways to think about how to do this. So they're taking a real detailed look at some of this, and frankly, it's almost overwhelming. Even if we weren't 10 months behind, this is a big lift. So they're working through some of these things. They'll be talking more about this, and at the end of the presentation today, I'll talk about ways to move forward just to acknowledge how big this task is and how to break it down into bite-sized pieces that are manageable to find what works here. And it may be pieces of what work other places, but I don't want to convey that we're thinking, we'll just take this off the shelf from City X, we'll apply it here, it's good to go. That's not going to work. So that's what takes some time, is sorting through what bits and pieces of what others have done might fit here, might work here. Next up. So recommended path forward. You see the Compass Rose up in the corner there. This is me talking to you now. This is not what they've said. I will be talking to them soon, but I wanted to talk to you first about how do we move forward from here? The R glass in the upper left-hand corner there, you can see, is broken. There's 10 months' worth of sand that has already flowed out. So we're behind the curve already. Now, the deadline, as you know, was last December. My concern, and looking at all the details, some of which I'm about to relate further detail to you shortly here, is unless the council, and I'm talking about the council, not just because I'm looking at you right now, but because you are the decision-makers who drive this train. You are the ones that are responsible under the law for adopting these regulations, adopting these plans, adopting these capital budgets, giving direction to your staff, giving direction to your planning commission, communicating all this with your public. So you are the key players in this whole conversation. So this is why I'm saying what needs to happen is council action. And I don't like to use hyperbole too much, but I'm using the word bold because I think what you need to do needs to be bold. It needs to be different than what's been done in the past. And I'll talk a little bit about the reasoning and what that means here shortly. I think unless you can take some bold actions along the lines of what I'm recommending to you here, something like them, you won't be done for a while. You might be having this conversation a year from now. You might be approaching 24 months behind schedule. And that has consequences, implications and risks that I'll talk about in a few minutes here. But to avoid the bad outcomes that I'm gonna describe, again, I'm really taking pains here not to sound like I'm being threatening or trying to frighten you. I know we're getting close to Halloween, but some of the outcomes that are possible are not really pleasant. So I have a duty, I think, to tell you what I think I'm gonna be telling you, and then it's your duty to figure out what you want to do with that. I think what you need to do is to adopt a deadline, June of 2026, eight months from now, to be finished with a periodic update. And that's not gonna be easy, and it's gonna require doing a number of things that won't be comfortable and that many people will not agree with. But I think to get to June of 2026 is a really important deadline to be working on. But I think to get to June of 2026 is a really important deadline to be working towards, and I'll talk about why that is here in a moment. I think you should require the Planning Commission to finish with the Winslow-Siberia by the end of the year. Now, that means they're not going to have every single T crossed, every single I dotted. As I said to them in the past, and I'll be saying this again to them Thursday night, you need to get what you're going to be doing with Winslow to a level of direction that can then be taken by the staff and the consultants, L M N, and then fleshed out into detailed policy, but especially the regulations. You cannot expect a laybody, a planning commission, no matter how smart, how dedicated, how experienced they are, they're not going to be able to stand there and write code, line by line. That's not what they do, it's not, it's not what she should be expected to do. But what they should be expected to do is to give direction, give enough detailed direction to the staff and the consultants, that they then can do that more detailed work, bring that back for their consideration, and then tweaking if they need to at some point. I think you need to schedule a citywide comprehensive plan work for the first two quarters of next year, and by that I mean the elements. So once we're done with the Siberia Plan for Winslow, you have the rest of the island, and the rest of the city needs to be addressed, not with Siberia Plans, but with land use element, housing element, transportation element, so on and so on. So that is the work for the first half of next year. Again, that's not going to be easy. I do think the good news is, a lot of what is there already is pretty good. I'm very experienced with it, because I think I helped you write much of it. So at the expense of self-serving, I think it, it works pretty well. Now, that's not to say it can't be improved, and there are some things in it that will need to be updated, to make them more current, acknowledged pieces of the statute that are requiring some changes, to keep them internally consistent with one or the other, which they need to be under the law. But again, the good news is, you don't have a lot of work you have to do in many of those elements. There even are some elements, I think, you don't need to touch at all, because they're optional elements, the statute did not require you to adopt some of those elements. You chose to, that's your right, but I don't think the state is going to say you need to adopt amendments to those optional elements. Unless you want to and have the time to do that, I'm here to tell you, you don't have the time to do that. Now, there's time to do other things, and here I'm going to make an important distinction between things that are essential, things that need to be done to satisfy the law, to put you in a position where if you're challenged, you'll be in a pretty strong position, or stronger than you might be otherwise. But these are not things that are not important, these are not things that you should forget about doing. The world will continue in July and beyond, and you and your planning commission, I think, will continue to be busy with the work that is important, but that is not essential to be done by June of next year, when it comes to the comprehensive plan periodic update. I think you should direct the staff, again, to draft essential changes, things that surgically need to be done. This is not the time to start importing another six or 10 policies into, into elements. Again, there's some time to do that, and a lot of these, every time you touch a policy or come up with new policies, it takes time to talk about them, to have a discussion about the merits, so why are we, I think, considering this additional policy? Again, if we had 10 more months, maybe some of that would be appropriate and doable. We don't have 10 more months. So I think what you need to do is ask the staff, for those elements that we'll talk about momentarily, to be worked on next year, to be very strategic, very focused on what they identify as things that really do need to be addressed in the near term. I think you need to direct the Planning Commission then to review the staff-drafted elements and reserve for the second, the third and fourth quarters of next year, the preparation and implementation strategies for some of those elements. For example, housing element, I think there are a lot of details that need to be going into what I would call a housing strategy, and I think there's a discussion later this evening, Councilmember Schneider's queued up to talk about what kind of decisions might the city make about how to address the income band brackets mandated by 1220. I don't know that we're going to have complete answers to that in the near term. Other cities have adopted plans, I think of the 82 cities in the region, low 70s of them have already adopted, I mean, they've met their 2024 deadline. So they've already gone through this exercise, and even they are queuing up more work. Was talking to Everett, was talking to Samamish, was talking to Bothell, they all have work programs that go on beyond when they updated their comprehensive plan update. I think you'll want to do the same thing. So there'll be strategies, I think, that would be needed to address the housing funding gaps, especially the subsidies, got to figure out how you're going to queue up, what that might look like. You need to be thinking about the groundwater management actions that might be appropriate that would flow from, no pun intended, your groundwater management plan. You might want to be thinking about planning for long-term infrastructure capacity. That's water, that's sewer, that's utilities, because, again, one of the requirements of the Growth Management Act is that whatever the housing and land use you put in your comprehensive plan has to say must be supported by those infrastructure elements. Some of that you can be thinking about, talking about, I think, in these elements of the plan, but some of the strategic implementation of those things is going to have to take place off into the future. Now, how far into the future is up to you. How much resource of the Planning Commission and the council do you want to commit to that other work, past adoption of your periodic update? But again, I'm saying, in the near term, the things I think you need to do and can do won't be easy. It'll be asking a lot of your volunteer planning commissioners and for your community to give input on some of these things. Next slide. Now, why is this important? Again, not putting on the mask, this is on Friday the 13th, but there are some risks, and it's my duty to tell you what those look like. The first one is continuing noncompliance with the Act could be appealed to the straight go hearings board. In August, there was a decision by the Growth Hearings Board regarding the Mercer Island and Kitsap County Comprehensive Plan Updates. They were both challenged, they both were found to be noncompliant. You then asked the city attorney to write your legal opinion, which he did, and I just quoted parts of it off page five of his opinion, and I highlighted the ones that I think are critical to keep in mind, is that those decisions are important guidance, and that you should heed this guidance, so that your plan and regulations will be deemed compliant by the Growth Board in the event that an appeal is filed. So I've heard people say, well, that's just the Growth Board. That's not a Superior Court, that's not the Court of Appeals, that's not the Supreme Court, that's not the final law. For the time being, it's the law. It's a good reading of the law, until unless a reviewing court says it's not. So I think waiting for the final, final, final word, you're talking potentially, if this goes all the way up the chain, you're talking years, if you're waiting for a final, final, final. So I think it's guidance in the near term, you need to be thinking about that. I heard just this morning about another Growth Board case, and I hadn't heard of it until The State of Washington has filed an appeal against the City of Duval. Now, they adopted their comprehensive plan, and the Growth Board has an appeal in front of them, they haven't ruled on it, they're still getting, pre-hearing order just came out, and the allegation there is that, well, yes, they adopted their plan, but in their resolution adopting their plan, they specifically said, there are parts of this thing that we're not going to do. So the State of Washington very, very rarely ever files an appeal of a city or county action. Part of the reason for that is, it requires the governor of the State of Washington to authorize that agency to file an appeal. Doesn't happen very often, I can't remember the last time that happened. When I was on the Growth Board, it happened maybe twice. So the governor doesn't get involved or authorize Commerce to get that directly involved, unless there's some reason to. Next slide. Now, apart from the idea of there being an appeal to the Hearings Board to think about, there also is something called the Housing Accountability Act, Senate Bill 5148, which gives some direction to Commerce to select up to 10 jurisdictions per year to review for consistency, the requirements of that law, which is to say, compliance with the Growth Management Act. They will come up with a selection criteria for their process, they've already issued a draft of what they think that selection process should look like, they'll be taking comment and finalize it by December of this year. The statute says, selections will focus on jurisdictions whose periodic update deadline has passed. That's a small privileged subset of cities. Next slide. Now, this is, again, quote right out of the statute, out of 3511A, what are consequences for you being, and they don't use the word audit, but I think that's the word, for you being audited at one of the 10 lucky jurisdictions that's audited by Commerce and found wanting, noncompliant? It says here that a noncompliant city or county may not deny an affordable or moderate income housing development, or approve an affordable or moderate income housing development with conditions or restrictions that have a substantial adverse impact on the viability of development, or the degree of affordability of the department development, unless at least one of the following conditions is met. Now, that's a tremendous long run-on sentence, and I, my advice to legislators is, if you have to take more than two breaths to get through the sentence, you need to break it up into a few more sentences. But if you read this a couple of times, what this is saying is, number one, if you have a noncompliant city or county, you may not deny certain projects, you may not deny an affordable or moderate income housing development. Apart from that, also, if you do approve something and you impose conditions that it would adversely impact the viability of the project, you can't do that either. Then they say, unless. In Sub, small Roman 1, the city or county has received a final decision from the department, meaning Commerce, determining that its housing element and any housing development regulations comply with the laws and regulations identified in subsection 7 of this section. So the, a new loop has been created. Apart from going to the Hearings Board, the legislature has created this review loop to be aware of, be thinking about. Next. So risk of gubernatorial sanctions. I don't like to talk about this, because this is, this is kind of scary to people. It also sounds like, eh, it's not going to happen, it's remote, the governor's not going to take that sword out of the scabbard. What it says is, the section, the statute, this is language out of the statute, the governor has the authority to impose sanctions on cities, counties, and state agencies that do not comply with the GMA, the citations there are the sections. Sanctions may include withholding or temporarily rescinding the authority to collect portions of one or more of the following: motor vehicle fuel tax, transportation improvement account, rural arterial trust account, sales and use tax, liquor profit tax, liquor excise tax, real estate excise tax, a lot of revenues that cities rely on to do things that they need to do. So you think, well, this is really a drastic sanction the governor would be imposing on someone, would he really do that? We don't know. Has it ever been done? The answer is yes. Back in the 90s, Governor Lowry imposed these sanctions on Chelan County, because Chelan County basically was saying, we're not going to do it, you can't tell us we have to do this. And the governor cited these sections of the statute and said, okay, well, until you come into compliance, these are the consequences. Next slide. Now, risk of loss of state funding for city projects is something that we talked about earlier, I talked to the Planning Commission about this earlier in the summer, and I pointed to the fact there's a general risk listed in the wax of grants that might be in jeopardy if you don't have a compliant plan, and they're listed here, transportation projects, sewer projects, water system projects, stormwater projects, climate-related projects, parks, recreation or habitat projects, most of which would be very helpful, if not essential, to meeting some of the infrastructure demands created by growth, regardless really of how much growth is, is being, is being proposed. So when we talked about this, people were sort of, again, yeah, but that doesn't look like something we need to be too immediately concerned about. So that's why I said that is a general risk, that could happen. On the right side of the page is the real risk, it's an actual specific risk. Specifically at risk is an ecology grant that you have, has been approved for the city, for the Manzanita Watershed Stormwater Recharge Project. It's 722,000 and change of state money, with a match by the city of about $127,000. And the DOE funds for that project are contingent upon you having a compliant plan by June of 2026. So I've talked to the folks in Public Works here, they've talked to the grant administrators in ecology, the answer has come back down the line, yes, we mean this, this money goes away. So there's something to give serious thought to. Next slide. So turning back to, well, what should the Planning Commission and council be thinking about doing in the near term? You should be focusing on adequate provisions. Now, that's language out of 1220. You must take action to provide adequate provisions of different kinds. You must talk about barriers, which are primarily regulatory barriers, funding gaps, which we're getting back to, how do we pay for the subsidy for some of the housing that will require some amount of public subsidy, and what other actions might be needed? So these are bullets, basically out of a slide, I saw at a presentation a few weeks ago by Commerce staff, where they said that jurisdictions must document programs and actions needed to achieve housing availability, including gaps in local funding. This includes identification of barriers to affordable housing development, we'll talk about what barriers are in a minute, identification of the number of units that may require subsidies or incentives, and gaps in local funding that are needed to help meet the need, and then identification of local actions, which is, could be other things. But the two biggies here are, what do your regulations say, and are they creating barriers that can be either removed or reduced in some way? The second thing is, how are you going to, how are you going to identify in a meaningful way, public dollars that could help with the subsidy that's required to provide for some of this housing? Next slide. So for the final quarter of this year, I think one of the key focuses can be the development regulations that I think are a barrier. Commerce has prepared guidelines, has prepared a checklist, which I'll show you in a moment, saying, is this a barrier? Is this a barrier? Is this a barrier? Do you have this? Does this reduce the likelihood of affordable housing being built in your community? Well, this language jumped right out at me, it looked really familiar to me, because when I was working here back in 2016, this language was put in your comprehensive plan. This is right out of existing plan. This is what your plan says. What is a plan, and what is a plan not? Again, it makes the point, cites the statute right there, a definition of what is a plan. It's a comprehensive plan means a generalized coordinated land use policy statement. It is not a regulation, it is not a control, you cannot apply a policy directly to a permit. That's what this says. Bay Harbor General Comprehensive Plan is, quote, "a policy statement that provides important direction to a variety of city actions, including but not limited to the adoption of the capital budget and development regulations." That's what it's for. However, the plan is not a land use control, which means that it's not designed or intended to be applied directly to development permits. Now, this policy's been living in your plan for six years, seven years? It hasn't been living in your regulations, because your regulatory process now has invited people to go into the comprehensive plan and say, policy XYZ is not being met by this permit, so you cannot approve this project, you cannot allow this to proceed because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. This was your, I'll call it an attempt, this was your policy statement, you adopted this, this is in your, this is in your plan right now. My suggestion is, put it into your code. If you mean it, you need to put it in your code. If you don't mean it, don't put it in your code, but then take it out of your plan. I wouldn't suggest that, because then, again, that invites, that's a barrier. Next slide. So I mentioned that ecology, rather, Commerce has created these checklists, and this is an excerpt of some of the checklists. Staff is going through this, I've highlighted in yellow ones, I think, are ones that we've talked about already with the staff, and certainly some of these with the Planning Commission, things that Commerce has gone on to ask, are these barriers, is this a barrier likely to affect housing production? Yes or no? High minimum lot sizes, low maximum densities, or low maximum FAR, low massive, low maximum building heights, high street, off-street parking requirements, that's a big one that we've been talking about. Process obstacles, do you require condition use permits? Do you impose conditions on those permits that are needless, or unreasonable, or excessive, or that create barriers to the viability of projects? Do you have a designer view process? You have a designer view process here, you reformed it last spring, I understand, in compliance with another state law that said, you must make that a subjective, pardon me, you must make it an objective, not a subjective, process. And then SEPA is identified here as a potential barrier. So the staff's going to have to fill this out, staff's going to have to talk to the Planning Commission and to you about the answers to some of these questions, are these barriers, if they are, what can be done about making them less of a barrier, or to make them go away entirely as a barrier? And how would you do that? Next slide. So this is a slide actually was prepared by the Subcommittee on Incentives, and they were looking also at financial tools to address the subsidy question. This actually is a pretty, part of a very thorough review that was done by that Subcommittee. I mean, there's a lot of material that's out there that they, they looked at, this is just the graphically easiest way to summarize all the tools that are out there, and you're aware of most of these, federal tools, state tools, city taxes, some of which you already have on the books, you have funds going into these pots of money already. But I think what the city's going to have to think about is, of all the tools in that toolbox, many of which you've already authorized, which of those tools you want toolbox, many of which you've already authorized, which of those tools you want to pick up out of that toolbox and apply? And in some cases, there are differential rates or different degrees at which you might apply some of these tools. You know, what are those ranges or what are those choices you might have? And then how collectively might all of that constitute a flow of public dollars that would be your public subsidy pool to draw upon, to spend however you spend them in whatever conjunction with the private sector? So this is back to incentives to have public-private partnership on some issues where there's public dollars and private dollars involved in some of these projects. So this this is a lot of thinking that needs to be done, a lot of decision-making that needs to occur, and not all of it can take place in the next eight months. I think there can be a discussion, and I'll talk about what that might look like, in the plan where some of that policy direction can live, but actually sorting through some of these details will have to be strategies that follow the adoption of the update. Next slide. So thinking about the first half of next year, the first and second quarter, rather than deal with every single element in your comprehensive plan, my suggestion is you focus on these. The cap facilities, transportation utilities element, but basically our infrastructure-focused policies, I think there should talk about infrastructure implementation strategies that will align your capital dollars, capital investments over the short term, which are five- and six-year horizons, and then the longer term, 10 years, 20 years, 50 years. Some of these capital projects that are very expensive and have a long life are well beyond the 20 years horizon of your comprehensive plan. So all of that should be something that's talked about in the capital facilities element, and there need to be strategies about how to do that work over time. Again, whatever the policies are for land use and housing and how much is going to happen, how soon, it's not only going to happen next year or even in the next four or five years. This is a 20-year plan, so you do need to have the capacity over that time horizon to make sure that you can provide the infrastructure that's needed to support the land use that will occur over the 20 years. Now, this is not something that we can articulate precisely, but I think the concept is you need to have resources available, infrastructure available to serve the uses that come online when they come online. And if over time you need to make adjustments, you can make adjustments. Again, there's a whole body of law and thinking about how that would happen, but the point here is at the front end, that's something that should be talked about in those elements of the comprehensive plan during the first half of next year. Water resources element, I think I made mention of this already. You're not required to have a water resources element, but you wisely, I think, have chosen to have one. And that is the place where you would have policy language talking about your groundwater management plan. There are some things already in that plan that that are talking about implementation steps that could or should be taken. I think in the water resources element is a place where you could say, which of these have priority? Conservation, I think, comes through really loud and clear as something that is not sort of a long-term strategy. I think it's something from everything I'm reading and hearing, you should be doing now. You should be thinking about taking serious action to get conservation and other steps underway, to recognize that you've got a very finite resource that you need to manage carefully over time, starting now. Housing and land use element go together. Housing policies in the near term could call for a coordinated housing strategy to implement the Winslow-Savaria Plan and the Housing Action Plan policies we were mentioning earlier. Should include the funding strategy for the subsidy part of the housing need for the low, very low, and extremely low AMI income brackets. So this may sound like, well, gee, we're just taking the hard part and pushing it off into the future. Well, the hard part's always going to be there. The policy part is the essential thing you must do in the relatively near term, and it needs to provide the direction to those implementation actions that need to take place and will keep your Planning Commission and you and your community busy figuring out exactly how to implement those things and what choices specifically to make. Next element. So next steps. I'm through talking about this tonight. I'm happy to come back and talk to you more about this in a few weeks. I think the council needs to think about this. If you have some discussion you can share with us tonight or subsequently, talking to the manager, talking to the plan director, talking to me, I'm still on the clock for a few more weeks, and come back to you on the 12th with some specific actions that we think you could take as a council. The key ingredient here is council direction. Staff works for you. The commission works for you. They're volunteers. They're heroes, but they work for you. They need direction and support from you. So this all comes back to you. I think you've got a great commission. I think you've got a really very engaging, engaged community who you will be hearing from, I'm sure, throughout all of this process. This is important stuff. It matters to everybody. I don't begrudge anybody feeling passionately about what they think the right thing to do or isn't to do. You lucky people get to listen to that and decide what to do with that, the fun part of being an elected official. I'll stop there. If there are questions I can answer, I'd be happy to try.
Thank you so much, Joe. I think, let's see, I think I'm with you at 9:30 in the morning, so I might save my list for that. Councilmember Fancher Johnson, does would anyone like to make, oh, would like to make the motion? Okay, Councilmember Deeds.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Very, very informative recommended motion. Acknowledge the consultant's report and schedule action for the November 12, 2025 City Council meeting to consider follow-up to the consultant's recommended path forward.
I second.
Great. Motion made and seconded all those.
Comment?
Yep, Councilmember Morewaki.
Just, we're so fortunate that you chose to come back and help us, Joe. You're very thoughtful. Your experience is fantastic. And when I see this presentation, it's really sobering. It is a, if you really look at it carefully and what is required, and I don't want to, I want us to be an exceptional city, but being one of the 10 singled out of the 380 that we're not meeting a target is not something that we should be proud about. So we really do have to step this up, and I appreciate you being bold.
Thank you. I am happy to work with you, happy to work with your commission, your staff. I've talked to people from the community who reached out to me. I'll do what I can do to be helpful in the near term and wish you well in the longer term.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is consider emergency funding request of $30,000 to supplement Helpline House's food bank.
Thank you, Council. The next item on your agenda is indeed to consider a funding request for $30,000. I think you heard some public comment earlier this this meeting on this topic. If you give staff direction, we will work with Helpline House to sign an agreement to put into effect the direction that you give us.
Councilmember Deeds?
Great. I'm going to make the motion then speak to it. I move to approve the emergency funding request of $30,000 to supplement Helpline House's food bank program with funds from the council's contingency fund.
Second.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Deeds, seconded by Councilmember Morewaki.
Oh, and I was going to speak to this. Yes, if I could. Really appreciate the conversations. I learned about this through just kind of happenstance in a meeting. I heard things were a little rough from Helpline House and thought, what can we do? And and one thing, it helps to know the budget. We do have a contingency fund, about $175,000. Talked it over with Maria. What could we do? Immediately, $30,000 came came forward. I think that's this is a well investment because we can't have islanders go hungry. Come on. I mean, this is the this is the world we're living in now. So welcome my councilmembers, my colleagues' support. And I'll just say, I'm going to make a personal donation following this, and and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Deeds, and thank you for bringing this forward. Little would you have known then what would be happening now, which is even wilder. So this is timely. Okay, seeing no more lights. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Helpline. Thank you, Helpline, for all you do. Okay, next we are moving on to, oh, we are going to a request for reconsideration and vote on Housing Resources Bainbridge's request for change of AMI for 560 Madison.
Thank you, Council. The next item is a request for reconsideration and vote on a prior action that the council took. At your earlier, at your meeting earlier this month, you took an action which failed on a 3-3 vote. A member of the council, which was on the prevailing, in this case, the the no side, wishes to reconsider this. We have the city attorney here if you have any questions about the process, but turn it over to you for your discussion.
Schneider, and then and then Councilmember Fancher Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, I was one of the nay votes last time around, which was what prevailed. And I have since done a lot of work researching it and talking with Housing Resources Bainbridge multiple times, requesting additional information. So I I'm actually grateful for having this opportunity to do some intense work because, you know, it was, I think there were some legitimate concerns that were brought forward, and I think it does all of us well to, you know, dive into what's really behind it. A concern I have tonight is that one of our members here would really like to make her statement. So Councilmember Hytopolis is not here tonight. What I would like to do or propose is that we have our conversation, our discussion about it, and I don't know what the consequences might be of punting the the vote on this. We don't.
I would like to read her comments from her email, which are pretty specific.
Okay.
And that will be considering, I think, I can assume she would be in, I can't, I don't want to assume for her, but I would read her.
Okay, so I'm not finished yet, but if you wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, she reached out to me about a half hour before the meeting, and she's really insistent that she wants to be here in person to share it with all of us. We had a conversation about it, and, you know, she's in a lot of pain, and this is a really tough time for her right now, so she's got to heal from this important surgery. So I think we, I don't think there's a real urgent deadline on a grant or anything. So I mean, I appreciate Councilmember Schneider's, November 12, I think, would be the next meeting that we could possibly do this.
I'm not in support of that. I'm in support of going forward with the vote.
So I don't know procedurally, we could. I guess we don't have, we don't have the votes to postpone it. Is that right? Okay. So what I wanted to share is what I have learned and considered to be significant in the meantime. So as public comment earlier today from Housing Resources Bainbridge, we are not by any means short of the income range that would fill up those homes at the 40% to 60%. And in fact, they are all full right now. What I, and and there are many. There's a waiting list of over 200, I think, of those. Not all of them are in the 40% to 60%. Quite a few of them are under the 40%, which is doesn't pertain to these particular units. There are no rental subsidies for these units, so they have to, they have to sort of balance out long-term with the costs of maintenance and just, you know, keeping the units going long-term. But here's the thing that really struck me with a fair amount of inquiry, and this is a surprise. So we've had comments even tonight about, in public comment, about how there's, you know, this precious number of homes that have the 40% to 60% of AMI, and that that's our dire need. So I will say, first of all, we have a dire need across the board, and we'll be dealing with that, you know, as we go. But on a percentage-wise basis, what we heard from Housing Resources Bainbridge tonight, and what I was discussing with Phaedra earlier, is that Housing Resources Bainbridge itself has less than 10% of its homes allowed to be in the above 60%, which would be 60% to 80%. And overall, with all of the units that are subsidized on Bainbridge Island, less than 5% of them are available for 60% to 80%. And then there was kind of the specific anecdotes about some grocery clerks who were who wanted to be, who who wanted to get on into some of these units. And on the face of it, it looked like they would make it, right? So their hourly wages and everything else just sort of gave them the thumbs up, until it was revealed that, well, they worked some overtime, and then there were some bonuses, and then that pushed them over the edge. And these are grocery clerks. So given that there are so few, like 10, units on Bainbridge Island, and I'm forgetting what the actual number is, and and, you know, I, but there are just very, very few that are for the 60% and above, and the reason for that is because of the the funding requirements, right? I mean, that's where the subsidies come from, are these programs that are funding 60% and below. So Bainbridge has to be very focused on saying, okay, if we want our grocery store clerks and all of the other frontline workers that we need here on the island, if we want them to have housing here on the island, we need to provide them housing that will fit in an above 60% category. So we are excluding them right now. We're saying, nope, sorry, we don't have any options for you. So this is what made me want to dig deeper, and it's why I'm convinced now to switch sides and offer the flexibility for these few units, I think it's six units. The rest of them in Oliver are also required to be in the 60% and below. So if we can add five units or six units to be slightly above so that it balances out, I'm for it. Sorry for taking so long.
That was well said. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fancher Johnson.
This is probably for the city attorney. I was not present at the last vote, so I'm trying to understand my position here. Will I get to vote on this issue?
Yes, of course. Yes, you would. You you cannot make the motion for reconsideration because you were not present and were not voting, but you can vote on a motion for reconsideration. And if there is a motion brought to postpone it to another meeting, you can vote on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, City. Councilmember Morewaki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was surprised to learn that when Phaedra sent out her informative email, that I was the only person who reached out to her, and at least that's what I've understood. And but she said after, before the last meeting, and it was a very persuasive conversation, and I'm glad that my colleague Leslie Schneider has articulated, because I don't want to repeat what she just said, because I understand that. I just wonder why it has to be 20% increase. If it is indeed just over, can we ask for incremental? Can you ask for 65% or 70%? I don't know if that's possible. Maybe that's a question for the city attorney, but I just want to know if that's if that's the thing. I just want to make sure we're doing it exactly on the heart of what we're trying to do here for the individuals that Councilmember Schneider mentioned, who got some extra income and they just went over the $65,000, whatever that number might be. So if that's, if it's not possible, then that's not possible. But I would consider, I mean, make it incremental because a 20% jump is a much higher jump in income that doesn't capture, I think, the intent of trying to get just barely over the 60%.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember. We have one more question from Deputy Mayor, and then I'm sure you can answer.
Wait, I wasn't finished.
Oh, sorry.
And I'm I'm disturbed by this because, you know, we're a small group, and I think, and I've watched it in the past, that members who have asked for something like this to please be considered, that we usually do that because they were unable to attend or other reasons, and I don't know why you have to make the decision tonight. We can, I'm going to vote for it, but if we have the motion tonight, I'm going to vote against because we're not allowing a colleague of ours to be able to have the opportunity to speak out and talk with us. So I'm I'm not comfortable with having, it kind of shuts out one of our members. our members, and I don't feel good about that.
Thanks, Councilmember.
My question for the city attorney, just as to process, do we first vote on reconsideration and then vote on, have a separate vote on the motion itself, the change?
Yes. As I understand it, there are a couple of issues before the council or a couple of questions. First is whether or not you want to reconsider the denial of the motion that was made at the last meeting. If there is a motion for reconsideration that needs to be made by someone who voted in the prevailing side, which I understand Councilmember Schneider would qualify, any council member could second the motion. That motion would then be discussed and acted upon. And if that motion passes, the effect of that motion is to place the motion that was pending before the city council at the last meeting back in front of the council. Then you need to dispose of that motion. And there are two things that you could do there. The first would be, you can vote on that motion this evening. Or, the second idea would be that you can move to postpone the consideration of that motion to a date certain, which would be the next council meeting.
Yes.
If that motion is made and passed, then the, then the idea of whether or not to approve this request by HRB would go to the next meeting for discussion and, and action. If you decide against the postponement, then the motion would have to be disposed of this evening.
And the motion to reconsider, or the motion that we will then act upon, has to be the motion that was defeated with the 80% rather than some other number?
Yes. It would place that motion back on the table, but that motion is subject to amendment, as any other motion in the city council is.
Is it possible to hear from Phaedra or someone if that, no?
Oh, you like them.
Oh, how blurted. Okay. I will offer that the 0% to 30%, 30% to 50%, 50% to 80% of AMI are fairly typical, or those are usual percentages. So, if we deviate too much from those percentages, it complicates record-keeping and might make it harder to count some of the, it would just, it would be harder to know where we count those in our allocation for housing. We could do it, but those are typical, the 80% is a typical and used in many other parts of the housing code, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Francher Johnson?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say. Those are like the HUD numbers. And I think we ought to be voting on what was asked for, not changing it to what we think it should be. If this is what HRB is asking for, that's what we should vote on.
Councilmember Dietz?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this, but I heard you had a statement from Councilmember Hytopolis, so maybe go ahead and read that, and then I don't mind speaking.
Okay. 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 As I stated during the previous vote on this item, I believe that this is a significant vote from a city policy perspective, as well as personally to me having voted for the allocation of the ARPA funds under very specific terms. It does not feel good to have this item come back during my long-planned absence. And given the lack of urgency of the issue, I would hope the mayor and the motion-maker would be amenable to pushing the vote on this policy change out to the next business meeting. And please know that I'm not at all suggesting that Councilmember Schneider intentionally brings this motion forward during my absence. I'm quite sure Robert's rules require that it be brought forward at the next business meeting. I do not believe, however, that once the motion for reconsideration is successful, the item itself could not be moved to a future meeting for the revote. So, that's sort of a compromise. So, why don't we, it would council be amenable to that, that we do the vote on reconsideration now, get that forward, and then push that to the next meeting? Would that be okay?
And I can, I can make the motion.
Okay.
I would, I would like to take action tonight, but that's just one voice.
I was just gonna say, I voted in favor of the motion last time, so that's, I haven't changed my position. I, I think we need to trust Housing Resources Bainbridge, that they know what they're doing. That was my position then, that's my position now. So, I don't see any reason to wait myself.
I don't either.
I guess what I'm thinking is, it looks like we all, everybody up here today, would be in favor of voting for it. So, I would say, there, you know, there is no reason to push it out.
Okay.
We're not excluding something that's gonna change anything. It's not, yeah.
Okay.
It's a delay for delay's sake.
Councilmember Schneider? Okay, so I will make the motion to reconsider, and then somebody, or, you know, you could make the motion to postpone the vote, and that will pass or not pass. I move to reconsider amendment number one to the Declaration of Affordable Housing Covenants with Housing Resources Bainbridge for 560 Madison North to allow income at 80% of AMI and request...
A second.
I'll just leave it right there.
So, this is just...
Can you second it, because you weren't?
I can second. You said I could.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. A motion made by Councilmember Schneider, seconded by Councilmember Francher Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, Councilmember Murawaki?
Yeah. I would move that we take the final vote on this at the next, next business meeting, which would be November 12th. To, well, that's the motion and obviously intent that, oh, I would add to the motion, the intent, because to be consistent with previous councils' hearing from all members when they are not available to attend meeting.
Okay. I'll second. Motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That motion fails. Okay. Now, somebody want to make the motion?
I can, I'll make, well, it's a little weird here, but yes, I can do it. I move to...
The motion is already on the table. What is on the table right now is the motion to approve the, the Housing Resources Bainbridge's request for...
I get it.
The change.
Okay.
Because the reconsideration placed the motion you had before you at the last meeting back on the table.
You could say so.
Okay. So, I'll just move that we vote on the motion that is on the table now. Okay.
Motion made by Councilmember Schneider, seconded by, it was a tie, I give it to Councilmember Dietz.
Oh, wow.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Okay. All right. On to the next. Now, we are authorizing the city manager to reject $295,000 in federal transportation grant funds for the Eagle Harbor Drive Boardwalk and Buckland Protected Bike.
Good evening, Council. I will say just a couple of words of introduction, and then our Public Works Director, Chris Wurzbicki, will be here to provide a little bit more detail. This item is coming to you as part of our ongoing efforts for transparency and open public decision-making. Council authorized acceptance of a $295,000 grant earlier this year. We now have more information about the cost of the project and the required match that would be needed to take advantage of that grant. So, we're coming back to you with more information and requesting your authorization to now reject that grant and return the money to the granting agency.
Evening, Council. What's happening to the microphone? There we go. Chris Wurzbicki, Public Works Director. It pains me to ask you to reject grant money, however, that is what I'm going to recommend this evening. As the city manager mentioned, a couple of months ago, we had the opportunity to apply for some grant funding that was essentially turnback money from the Puget Sound Regional Council's Transportation Alternative Program. What they mean by turnback is that that was money that other municipalities couldn't spend on grant projects that had been awarded in previous years. And so, there was a pot of money that was available for any project that could quickly potentially be obligated for another project. We had a project on the list that was eligible that we had applied for about three years ago, which was the Eagle Harbor Drive Pedestrian Boardwalk and Protected Bike Lane on Buckland Hill Road. We moved quickly to try and capture those funds, about $300,000 with a $40,000 match. Now that we've had the opportunity to look a little bit closer at the requirements of meeting the full design, which is, which is required under this grant, we are looking at doing some extensive structural engineering. This project is also in the shoreline jurisdiction and in a wetland buffer. There's environmental permitting. There is shoreline permitting that needs to be done for this project. We estimate that the actual cost of the design is probably more than double what the current grant funds would cover, something more like $800,000, which is fairly expensive for a project that does not currently have construction dollars appropriated, and is not, doesn't have construction funds in the capital improvement plan. So, at this time, we're going to recommend that you reject it. However, I do want you to keep in mind that the Protected Bike Lane portion of the project is still included in the capital improvement plan in a project that is slated for design and construction in 2029 and 2030. We can certainly, you know, keep the boardwalk as well on that, as part of that scope if the council is interested in the future. But I think it's probably best to wait and get that project, you know, on the books at the time when we have it currently scheduled with other funding sources. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to your discussion.
Thanks, Director Wurzbicki.
Councilmember Schneider? I'm taking a deep breath.
I agree with your sigh.
So, this is painful. The, the reason that we, and specifically I, pushed for the opportunity to have an option of a boardwalk back then was because that was really the only way to get protected infrastructure on that side of the road. It's very, very tight right there. And so, this was a way of saying, okay, it is what it is right now, but we can, you know, look forward. And yes, it's been a number of years. So, I called Kelly McGurty at Puget Sound Regional Council, because I wanted to make sure that there was no way to turn this into, like, dollars for 30% design. And she went out of her way to go and check up on it, and I received an email back from her this afternoon that just basically reinforces what we just heard from Director Wurzbicki. The rule being referenced is that phases are required to be fully funded at the time of award and programming in the transportation improvement plan. It is accurate that we cannot provide partial funding to phases per federal and state rules. It's also, you know, frustrating that as, as the director mentioned, you know, we jumped at some funds that had already been given back, right? And so, this is a second chan, this is the second time these funds have been given back. And it's going to make it somewhat difficult for, you know, PSRC to reallocate these funds, you know, at this time. And so, I'm personally just sitting in those transportation policy board meetings. I'm, I'm a little concerned about, you know, the, just sort of the impact. And it'll be fine. It'll be fine. I know it'll be fine. But I'm going to sit there and grit my teeth at the, at the next meeting. So, I think that's all. It is what it is. I just wanted you to know I followed up on it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Francher Johnson?
I'm gonna make the motion. I move to authorize the city manager to reject $295,000 in federal transportation grant funds for the Eagle Harbor Drive Boardwalk and Buckland Protected Bike Lane project and evaluate alternative funding, future funding options.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded, and Councilmember Murawaki is going to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Matthews. This is like a yes vote that I don't want to do. I mentioned this, I mentioned this National Lampoon picture while going, it's a funny one. It has this dog on the cover, and there's a gun at the dog's head, and it says, buy this magazine or we'll kill this dog. I mean, it's just like, we're caught here. And I would hope that the Puget Sound Regional Council, it's not that, I know there are other people who are competitive for these grants, and these are hundreds of thousands that some other city might have been able to use for a project, but they gave it to us. That's, that's a tough deal, because whoever lost out on that is now, so I don't like that look either. It seems really irresponsible as a city to do that, especially when there's other communities that might have been able to move forward on this. So, I just, as another entity and another government in our region, I just, that is not a great look. But I'm staring at and reading at it, and I understand it. And thank you, Councilmember Schneider, for going a little extra deep to see that if that's, that's the actual way that it has to be done, that has to be 100% designed. So, it's a yes vote, but I really don't want to do it.
Councilmember Schneider?
So, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a very quick comment that I do appreciate, Chris, the fact that you went after these funds. And I, I understand that, you know, in the, with the timelines and lots of things that we don't know about what you have to do, you know, there wasn't enough time to do due diligence on what it would take. So, I just want to say that I am not carrying any grudge. I want us going after those funds, but yeah, there's, there's consequences. All right, I'm ready to vote. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposition, we will move on to communications. First is confirm participation in a joint letter to Governor Ferguson advocating for derelict vessel removal.
Thank you, Council, and thank you for the thoughtful discussion on the last item. I appreciate that. The city has been invited by the city of Paulsboro to join in a letter with other Kitsap counties advocating for additional derelict vessel removal funding and a change in state law defining derelict vessels. There's a copy of that letter in your packet if you'd like to look at it. Derelict vessels are vessels that are either unowned or uncared for, and if they sink, the city is obliged to clean them up. And so, we are eager to get state funding for that when we can. We have received over, just over $50,000 over the past five years, and plan to continue our plan, plan to continue to take care of those vessels as well. But the letter would then, you would authorize us to participate in a joint letter with other Kitsap counties advocating for funding for ourselves and other cities.
Okay. Councilmember Murawaki?
Thank you. I move the city of Bainbridge Island participate in a joint letter with the other Kitsap County cities to Governor Ferguson advocating for derelict vessel removal funding and change in state law defining, quote, "derelict" vessels.
Great. Motion made and seconded. The port has been having some really helpful calls and information that they've been sending out about the specific one that has this leak and has been the cause of all this. And I do thank Mayor Raupetansu and others for putting this together. So, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the last communication is Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you. So, I appreciate the fact that it, my screenshot made the text going teeny-tiny. So, I'm grateful that was pushed out there. On the screenshot, I wanted just to say that in my discussions in the last few days with Housing Resources Bainbridge, I was told that this, that these numbers are not wrong in and of themselves, but they're in the wrong category. So, the, so the Erickson cottages, or the Eric, I'm sorry, the Erickson project, that those 18 units would be in the 30% to 50%. They, and I just think that that's, you know, we've already voted on that. But I just wanted to show that I was wrong in where I put some of these numbers. And likewise, for the Wintergreen... And likewise, for the Wintergreen Phase 1 and 2, those are in like a 60% and below. So, my numbers are wrong. This is just a tool that I wanted to bring forward. I've been wanting to do this for a long time. It just, I kept assuming that we would be getting here, getting here, getting here, and then we didn't. And so I just did the spreadsheet myself and said, all right, let's focus our talk on these strategies. So, that's it. We'll bring this back at another meeting, and I'm going to go look for the motion now. Or if somebody else has it.
Remember Fantry Johnson?
Oh.
Sorry, Councilor Deets.
I, I can do it if, Leslie, if you're...
Or Councilor...
Sure, okay, yeah, go for it.
Go ahead, Leslie.
I've got too many windows up.
Oh, well, all right. Consider request from Councilmember Schneider to discuss housing strategies towards the implementation of House Bill 1220 mandates on a future council agenda.
I second.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Deets, seconded by Councilmember Fantry Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition, and we are adjourned.
Don't be so happy.
Blue Jays won. Series tied 2-2.
No, wait, they won the game, so it's tied up.
It's tied up, it's two, two apiece. Toronto won. The series is tied 2-2.
I know, but what was the score?
Six to two.
Oh.
Oh.